Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is June 2nd, 2021. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones is not present today, but Commissioner Giffens and myself are. And I will begin by making a motion to add an item, and we'll call this item D. D is in dog on our agenda. And it is to add calendar year 2021, Indiana Department of Corrections, Community Corrections Grant Contract Amendment. Second, all right, we have a motion and we have a second to add this agenda item. This is for the probation department. And we have three fund numbers and three amounts listed. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on adding item D to our agenda?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you, sir. And we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is a proclamation, and we'll begin with you, Commissioner Giffens, please.
Thank you. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed with guns, and Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens. And access to a gun increases the risk of death by suicide by three times. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, there are 959 gun deaths in Indiana every year. And support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And local law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe.
Great. And I lost my screen. Thank you. In January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States were recognized National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and all the other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. The idea for a gun violence awareness day was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. By wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim June 4th, 2020 as Wear Orange Day. And we're proclaiming that today, June 2nd, 2021. So I appreciate Commissioner Giffens for bringing this forward to us. We're used to having a really great community event at the courthouse. And because of COVID, they've made other arrangements this year, but hopefully next year, we will all be back at the courthouse for this. And did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just appreciate all the efforts of the local Moms Demand Action Group. They are very, very active. And I see them out with their children, and that makes a difference, too.
Absolutely. Yes. It is a real shame. I was thinking about this last night. It is a real shame that in some parts of our country, it is harder to vote than it is to get a gun. And that is a sad, sad fact that we all have to live with. So thank you for that. And we will move on now to department updates. First on our list is the Health Department. Ms. Cottle is taking a well, 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 well-earned rest. Ms. Purdy, did you want to talk about the items that she has, or I can do that?
I certainly can do that. Sorry, I was also, somebody was talking to me at the same time. It's very difficult for me. I can actually do Ms. Cottle and also Ms. Rich, who is at a training today. So yes, so Ms. Cottle wanted to share that we are, in fact, still in a Blue Advisory. And there are two upcoming outreach clinics. One is June 3rd at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall from 11:00 to 6:00. And that is going to be the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a one-shot vaccine. June 7th, it's going to be back at the Convention Center with Moderna. And that is a two-dose clinic for Latino and Hispanic clinics. We'll do a first dose, but we'll need another location for the second dose. And I believe that was all the updates she had.
That is excellent. Thank you so much. We won't ask you any questions, but we will turn now to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning. I am happy to share that I got some blood drive results. And the first, I wanted to let you know, since we started in 2021, so not since we've started these drives, but since 2021, we've collected 955 units of blood from our drives, which could potentially save 2,865 lives. So we have two drives scheduled in June. They are June 28th from 10:00 to 3:00, and June 29th from 2:00 to 7:00. And they predict that we will have hit the 1,000 unit collected. So it's a, it's a right-on-target. They, they try to hit the 2,000 units in a calendar year. So we're almost halfway through, and we would hit that 1,000, which is awesome. So kudos to the Convention Center, the Red Cross, and of course, all of those individuals that have made those donations thus far. And I encourage you to go to redcross.org and make an appointment for the June 28th from 10:00 to 3:00, or the June 29th from 2:00 to 7:00 drives. And then, of course, we continue to schedule those out. And we do have those additional drives as the months progress on our county website at co.munro.in.us. So if the June drives don't match in your calendar, you can look at the future dates and see if there's one that does match. It is June, and we are in a new, a new month. And so we have a new, excuse me, preparedness event. And June is pet prepare, I'm sorry, pet preparedness month. And it's also Lightning Preparedness Month. So this month, I'm going to hit different things, different weeks, so that we can stay on track with the CDC's prevention and preparedness topics. And so today, I'm going to talk about pet preparedness. And we just need to make sure, as you are thinking about your medicines and your food for your family, making sure that you have enough for a 72-hour period if a disaster would occur, to keep in mind and be mindful for all of your animals and pets as well. This includes farming and farming animals as well. So if you have a herd of cattle and you need to make sure that you're prepared, make sure that if something would happen, that you have enough to be able to take care of them for that 72 hours. Always have that as a backup. So that is my preparedness tip for the week, or for, yeah, for Week 1 of May. And each week, I will hit a different topic. That's all I have today.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. And this is June, but I know that this is a new topic, so you're right on target. But it's June. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Giffens?
I'd just like to point out to people that they can sign up for the blood drive, even the day of. There was somebody that walked in when I was there last week. And yeah, don't hold back.
Yeah, it's a good, good, good idea. And for everyone who has a dog named Lightning, this is your mom. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Moore. We appreciate you. And we will see you next week. Excellent. And we'll come back to Ms. Purdy for the highway reports.
Yes. So as I said, Ms. Rich is at a training, but she wanted to share that they are, in fact, doing their normal activities, paving, patching, brush cutting, and various areas around the county. And she also noted that any hazard or work requests that the public may have can be reported on our county website. And that's all I have from her.
Excellent. And we will not pepper you with questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the updates. We appreciate you filling in. And our next agenda item is public comment. And this is for items that are not on our agenda. And all you have to do is raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen to let us know that you wish to speak. There is a three-minute limit, time limit, and you will hear a tone at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. Excellent. Thank you so much. When you hear that tone, that means you have three seconds left to finish your thoughts. The same time limit will hold true for our regular agenda items as well. And it looks like we have one person so far who wishes to offer comment on an item not on our agenda, Rob King. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Well, hey, good morning. And I won't take three minutes of your time. Mine's basically an introduction. I'm Rob King. I'm the Executive Director of the South Central Regionate Workforce Board. We serve Regionate, which Monroe is our hub for the region. And we have, my business basically revolves around a local elected official agreement. Basically, it's usually served by one of the Commissioners. They serve as a liaison to the Workforce Board. This is not a voting position, but you work, basically, you get to work with me, and I hope that's not too bad. But basically, I keep you abreast of any events that affect employment and training. Of course, you know, in this past year, during the COVID events, unemployment has been a huge issue. But we worked with several employers around the community, and we were able to help get their issues resolved. Basically, my business revolves around, we need to appoint one of you as that liaison. And basically, there's paperwork. I've been working with Dina Myers. She's awesome. And Angie Purdy, I want to say, I got to see her face today, and I've been meaning to meet her for like, a long time. She's always been great to work with as well. So I appreciate her. She's always responded to me. And I apologize, I haven't been up on one of your meetings here before now to introduce myself, to show my face. This past year's been kind of busy, to say the least. But yeah, the paperwork is very minimal. It's a two-page document that I provided to Dina. And basically, on, I think it's on the first page, there's going to be a place for the appointed person. And when you put your information in on that, I just ask that you give me your cell phone. I promise, I'm not going to stop you or, or call all the time. I've loved texting. That keeps me going and keeps me in, in with everybody. And basically, I keep you up on any updates or information that you may want to have, or direct communications that I think a Commissioner would want to know or hear. And on the second page, one of the Commissioners, it can be the President or just one of the non-appointed Commissioners, just needs to sign it as the, as the nominating official. So that's basically all I wanted to do. And I entertain any questions you may have for me. But when we get past the pandemic, I will come out and would like to have a sit-down with one of you, just to introduce and talk about anything you'd like to talk about. I'm basically here to serve you in Monroe County, just so you know. And I know you're very busy, and I respect your time. So whoever gets appointed, that's always taken into consideration. And I'll work with you via phone and text if I have to. I will, I plan on you coming to all kinds of meetings. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King. Great to meet you virtually. And we will work on this, and we will have an answer for you in the next week or so. Okay?
Oh, that's great. And nice meeting you two. You guys have a great day.
Thank you as well. We now have Molly Barwick. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name.
No, you, that's perfect. I'm Molly Barwick. And I just wanted to get on and quickly thank you on behalf of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm part of the Bloomington Moms Demand Action Group. And just wanted to thank you for your support of our work on gun violence awareness and prevention. Grateful. So thanks.
Thank you. And thank you to Moms Demand Action vocal for all of your hard work as well. We appreciate you. Thank you. Excellent. All right. I do not see anyone else listed to, with their hand raised to speak. So that will close out our public comment for items not on our agenda. And we will move on to items six, if you would, Commissioner Giffens. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, just noise in the background here. Move to approve the minutes of May 26, 2021.
I will second that. Did you have comments that it's corrections?
There's one correction. What was listed as the Bloomington Township Coalition should be the Monroe County Township Trustee Corporation in terms of the, the group that we allocated money to. And I've sent that on to Ms. Freeman.
Great. Excellent. With that, Edith, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approving the minutes for May 26, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item seven, please.
Move to approve claims docket accounts payable, June 2nd, 2021, and payroll, June 4th, 2021.
I will second that. And we will now turn to Mr. Miller. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for accounts payable claims was $1,334,025.81. $270,906.81 was for food and beverage tax distribution for the month of April. $255,649 was for the City of Bloomington for the Peace App Lit Central Dispatch for the month of May. $197,402.18 was for Rebecca Wengler for tax sale surplus. $129,065.74 was for Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for May claims. And finally, $126,610.55 was for Activate Healthcare for deferred revenue for quarter three. As far as payrolls concerned, the total was $1,642,193.49. 70.6% were direct costs, and the remaining 29.4% were indirect costs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you for the explanation. Yours thorough as ever.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. We will call on you. You will have three minutes to offer your comment. Seeing none, and we will come back for a vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the claim stocket account payable June 2nd, 2021, and payroll June 4th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Excellent. Thank you again. All right. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Move to approve Hope Alight LLC Consulting Agreement. Fund name, JTAI Programming, Fund Number 9145, and the amount of $3,750.
I will second that. Ms. McAfee, good morning.
Hello, and good morning. We are here this morning to talk about the Phase 2 of our contract with Hope Align. They will be here early this month to provide the training for the trust-based relational intervention. And you guys, thank you so much, signed the contract a couple of weeks ago. This is for the Phase 2 piece, which will involve our fiscal year 2122 grant. Implementation of new initiatives is always hard. And what this does is provide resources and support for all those who participate in our training to be able to maintain consultation and help and support in getting this initiative implemented in whatever agency they're representing. So these funds are not only going to be used to provide probation support, but any of the other agencies that are participating in the training, they're going to get that consultation support as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. What an exciting program. And Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Yeah, one of my nieces does trauma kinds of consulting work. And I contacted her about this trust-based relational intervention, and she said it is fabulous, just fabulous. So I'm really glad that this is what you've chosen to go with.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you. I went through the training earlier this year and was impressed. But I appreciate the outside kind of words of encouragement that this is the way that we should be going. Thank you.
Yeah. This is, this is a fabulous program. It looks great. And so glad that you pursued this. And really excited to see what comes out of this. This is really good. Let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. You'll be limited to three minutes per commenter. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve Hope Alight LLC Consulting Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too. All right. We'll move on to item B, please.
Move to approve agreement with Baker Tilly, US LP, Regarding Annexation. Fund Name, County General. Fund Number 1,000, and the amount, Base Work Not to Exceed $50,000.
I will second that. Good morning, Mr. Cockrell. Keep wearing orange, too. Nice.
I got the memo.
You did.
This, this agreement, and I would ask that when you approve it, you approve it subject to the legal department review, because we are still working on some of the contractual language for that. Essentially, the, this is to have the fiscal plan of the city reviewed regarding annexation. They, they have a 45-day timeline to, that they think that this work will need to be done. And, and that would put it at mid-July right now. And the public hearing is scheduled for August 4th. So we, we really want to fast-track this, but we want to make sure it's done correctly and accurately. It is a, that 50,000 is a not-to-exceed amount for what is considered the base work, which is essentially, we ask them to provide a, an additional quote for, on a per-meeting basis, so that we could have meetings with townships, in the townships, you know, with the, with the people who are in the annexed areas, as well as other, other members of the public who are interested. Those are an additional cost, depending on whether it's live or via Zoom or, or some other platform. That would be an additional cost of, of between 4,000 and 7,000 per meeting. So that is not included in that not-to-exceed-50,000 amount. So I guess at this point, we'd ask that you guys approve it based upon our ability to get the, all the legal terms situated.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Two things. Do we need to do an amendment to make this subject to legal department review?
I think, I think that that would be appropriate, yes.
Then I move that we amend this to make it subject to the legal department review.
I will second that. And if you would call the roll on amending the motion to make this approval based on legal department review.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
The amendment is approved, two to zero.
I, I just wanted to point out also that this does include two public meetings. It's my understanding, right?
Correct. And those are kind of the, I think they're envisioned to be with the Commissioners and County Council, to kind of give, when that report is given, kind of an initial meeting. I think what we're talking about with the, with the public engagement meetings is, is not included in the base amount. But two with the county are.
Yeah. And, and we can always, because they, they have this set up based on an hourly charge, if we choose to have one of those meetings instead of two, then we can end up saving a little bit of money on the contract as well, or for the toward another meeting, a public meeting. So, so it's going to be really important to get this data and to get it right. There are just so many questions about the reading report that the city has issued on their website. A good time to remind folks, if you're not sure what we're talking about with annexation, to check out co.munro.in.us. And you can see a link there right on the homepage. And under Important News, you will see a link right there with, with further information, which will take you to the city's website as well. Very good. Thank you for working on this. I know this has been moving very quickly because it has to. So we appreciate your hard work on all of this. Let's see if there is any public comments. Looks like we might have a question or comment from Mr. Askins at East Square Beacon. We're bringing you up. Here we go. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the question that I have this morning has to do with the impact on existing property owners within the city of any of these annexation proposals. So the fiscal plan of the city does not seem like it includes an analysis of the impact on property owners already inside the city limits. And it's possible I've missed that angle on things. So my question is, would it be outside the scope of work for this contract with Baker Tilly for them to look at impacts on existing property owners? Or is the idea here just to check the work of the city's consultant? And if that's the way it's currently set up, my question would be, is a city taxpayer analysis something that the county Commissioners would be willing to have Baker Tilly take a look at, so that people who already pay property taxes inside the city of Bloomington have a clear understanding of, of what, if any, impact these annexations would have on their tax bill? Thanks. That's the question.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Askins. Great question. Mr. Cockrell, do you want to tackle that one?
Well, I can tell you, with our discussions with Baker Tilly so far, we've not really broached the, within the, the current city resident angle. I think that we've focused primarily on those who are in the annexed area, plus those who are in the townships that are going to have annexation occur within them, to kind of see what that does to their property taxes. I, I would defer to the Commissioners if they think that this additional step is, is necessary. I would be surprised if it didn't raise the price a little bit, but I can certainly if, talk to them and see if that's something that's already included and they're already thinking about. Clearly, if they're doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis of the annexed area, I think they've already got a lot of work on their plate. And I, my, I could ask, but my fear would be that they're adding this work would extend the timeframe. And again, we're, in order for this report to be meaningful, we need to have it well before that August 4th deadline.
Excellent. Thank you. Did you have any response, Commissioner Giffens?
No, but as somebody who lives inside the city limits, I'm a little bit curious about that, too.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we talked about this at one juncture very early on, but the thinking is that this would require, because what the city has in their annexation report, fiscal impact report, is this list of how departments, individual departments would change. And I think that that would require really digging into the city's budget, which may be well beyond our timeframe and our fiscal ability. which may be well beyond our timeframe and our fiscal ability to. But this is an important question and I, and I would hope that, that the Bloomington City Council will ask for that kind of information. But it's a great question and it is one of many points of where we don't have information. We don't have information, for example, on which waivers have expired. You can kind of triangulate and try to figure it out, but it's very difficult to track. This does, this is not included in, in this report either that we're asking Baker Tilly to do. That would be something I would like, but that would take much longer as well. So I think there are a lot more questions than we're going to have time to answer because this is a quick, a quick timeframe. But thank you for the question. We appreciate it.
But yeah, I point out also, Commissioner Thomas, that some of the things the city's proposing to do in adding staff, some of it comes one year out and some comes three years out. And so we all may not know some of this for several years. And this is going to happen before people have the right to vote for the folks that are, are indicating this.
Yes, this is true. And you raise a good point too, because city budgets are made annually. They're not made three years out. So there may be a projection. But again, that's going to impact, obviously, the, there's going to be a fiscal impact on city residents, no matter which way the city council makes a decision on each of those additional personnel positions or the additional capital expense. So, yeah, so it is, it's very hard to predict. Very true. Good point. All right. Thank you, Ms. Raskins. And let's go next to Mr. Shelton. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton. As you know, I'm one of your appointees to the County Redevelopment Commission. And I invite you and this company to please take a look sooner rather than later at the impact on the TIFs. The city report says it's some $300,000. They say that there is a separate spreadsheet that explains this. It turns out there is no such spreadsheet either in the report or even in existence, apparently. And the, because we're doing infrastructure project, if, if this impact is severe enough to make us reconsider something we're doing, we need to know it now because we're, we've got two major projects going where we're acquiring right away, right now. So we're spending money. And if it turns out that we can't afford to do one of them, we need to know it long before this thing is ever over. So please have them take a look at that. The city has agreed, and Mr. Cockrell knows all this because he was the agent who made it happen. The city has agreed to come, send representatives to our next meeting in a couple of weeks and to talk about a number of things, and that'll be one of them. And I'm sure you've heard that their map for Area 1A is wrong. It shows they're annexing the old GE site owned by Cook, which is, takes up about half of one of our TIFs. So if you guys can get that resolved sooner, that, and I mean, before the 45 days and feed us that information to Mr. Cockrell, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, Mr. Shelton, you raise a great point. Excellent point. And I know Mr. Cockrell is working on that angle. But, but, but I know some of it relies on what the city's consultants are providing. And that's going to be the next big question. So thank you, Mr. Shelton. And next we have Counselor Hawke. Good morning. There you go.
Yes. Mr. Shelton covered part of my question, but I also wondered, do we know if the school is working, the schools working on trying to get information separately? Or will we be working with that to see what the loss is to the school? And I mean, it did show a fairly large loss to the school. So, and also we'll be seeing some changes to revenue for the library. The reason why I believe that that's so important and also trying to get information for the city residents because perhaps that will somehow encourage the city council to take a real hard look at this. And so I look forward to some answers. I understand that getting them right is better than getting them too quick and having it wrong. But time is certainly of the essence because people need now to be looking at whether or not their waivers are good or not good. That's not up for us to decide. They need to look at it and become very involved. You cannot sleep through this and expect us to fix it once it's over. It will be too late then. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Hawke. That's a great point. Yes. There's information at our link on the website, co.munro.in.us, which will give you information on how to contact the reporter's office. Mr. Cockrell, did you want to address anything that Ms. Hawke mentioned today?
I, I think that we certainly, I certainly agree with her that we want to get it right. And I certainly agree with her that we've got a really looming timeline on when it needs. Not only do we need it to write, but we need to have it correctly done in time for the information to be useful for, for our internal purposes as well as the, the public's.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And I will note that, you know, really, we are really impressed with Baker Tilly's work with our townships as they utilize their services to provide public information meetings for residents for the fire district question. So I'm, I have full confidence in their ability, but I don't envy them the timeline that they have to work under. So excellent. It looks like we do not have any other public comment. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I, but I do appreciate Councilmember Hawke getting on. She has a lot of experience in real estate. And so I think she's a very valuable person to have involved with this.
Yeah. Institutional knowledge means a lot. Definitely. Excellent. All right. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the agreement with Baker Tilly regarding annexation pending legal review?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. And our next item, please.
Move to approve an amended contract with Diane Hinchell regarding the quarry property. Fund name, 2019 GO bond, fund number 4812, in an amount not to exceed $8,000, which was the original amount.
I will second that. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell some of us?
Yes, and I brought this up at the work session last, last week. Our consultant has asked for a little bit more time to complete her report. And this is reviewing the quarry properties and our environmental studies to, to kind of look at the, the results of that and determine a risk assessment for that area. It didn't seem to push any timelines or timeframes unlike the previous agenda item. So it makes sense to give them another month to make sure that it's true and accurate and done appropriately. And that's all this does is change that, that due date.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm especially interested in making sure it's right, given that the EPA is, is looking to take this area off of its super fund list.
Yeah. Yeah, very important. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen, and I do not see any. So with that, we please call the role on the amended contract with Diane Hinchell regarding the quarry property.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you so much. And now we have item D, which was our newest, which is the item we added at the beginning of our meeting. Would you go ahead and make a motion?
Yes. Move to approve calendar year 2021 Indiana Department of Correction, Community Corrections Grant Contract Amendment. Can I read the fund name, fund number, amount for each? It's a, the total amount is $677,890. And that's broken down into Community Corrections Grant, Fund Number 9141-0000 in the amount of $574,346.50. Second part is for Drug Court Grant, Fund Number 9147-0000 in the amount of $78,855.50. And finally, Fund Name Mental Health Court Grant, Fund Number 9149-0000 in the amount of $24,688.
I will second that. And we have, thank you so much for getting through all of that. And we have Ms. Ray here. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Yes, thank you for getting through all of that. 2021 marks the 38th year that Monroe County has received this funding from Indiana Department of Correction. These grants fund our community corrections programs that include home detention, electronic monitoring, day reporting, and then a few of our problem-solving courts, specifically Drug Court and Mental Health Court, as well as our pre-trial program, which I'm excited to report has officially been a certified program through the state of Indiana. Due to the pandemic and the unknown of how the pandemic would affect future state budgets, Indiana Department of Correction awarded grant funding for calendar year 2021 at the same rate as 2020. And they split the grant up into two halves. So we've already been awarded funding for the first half of this year. Now we're here for the second half, which will run July 1st through December 31st. Of course, we're very fortunate to always receive this funding from the Department of Correction. More than ever through the pandemic, we were able to continue to provide services to all of our clients uninterrupted as much as possible. And really, the only other thing that I'll note is the Department of Correction just released their grant applications for calendar year 2022. So we'll be at it all over again.
It never stops. No, but excellent. We're getting this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I, I just applaud what goes on in your department. I know that was it last year that we celebrated the 20th year of Drug Court? And over 400 people had gone through there successfully and graduated from that. And so I think Monroe County is sort of at the forefront when we do with our specialty courts. So thank you so much for providing the funding for those. It makes a difference in people's lives.
Yeah, kudos and thanks to you and your staff for continuing your hard work and making it all happen and keeping our community safe. We really appreciate it. Let's see if there is any public comments on this agenda item. Simply raise your hand at the, on the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended contract? I'm sorry, on the, oh, I have to go back and open this up again. So sorry. There we go. On the, this is not considered an amendment though, is it? On the calendar year 2021, Indiana Department Corrections, Community Corrections Grant Contract Amendment, we'll put it that way. All right. On that, would you please call the role on that item?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And we don't have any appointments today and just a couple of announcements. And the first one, the most important one being, that we would like to take a moment today to honor Elizabeth Liz Vidal for her many contributions to our community. For those who do not know Liz, it's probably because she worked so hard behind the scenes to get a lot done. For almost 30 years, Liz Vidal has served workers in Monroe County as a labor organizer, as president and staff representative of the Communication Workers of America Local 4730, and as the AFL-CIO Community Service Liaison with the United Way of Monroe County.
In her role as the United Way Community Service Liaison, a position she held for approximately 20 years, Liz positively impacted the lives of workers in Monroe, Bartholomew, Brown, Green, Lawrence, and Owen Counties. She has also been involved in community service. Examples include pushing for a living wage in Bloomington and contributing to the Monroe County Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive that local postal workers conduct each year. We'd also like to thank Liz for serving on the Monroe County Women's Commission from 2013 until just last month. This commission has, among other things, gathered information on the health status of women in Monroe County, worked to sponsor programs on pay equity for women, and has sponsored coding camps and programs for young girls. Although Liz officially retired on Friday, May 28, 2021, we know that we, she will continue to find ways to continue her support for labor, for women, and for those in need. Thank you, Liz Vidal, for all you've done to enhance the lives of so many here in Monroe County. We are honored to know you and to call you our friend.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. You're a friend to Monroe County and we look forward to seeing what you do with the next chapter of your busy life. Thank you for everything you've done for us and thank you, Ms. Giffens, for compiling this great testimonial. And we're really going to miss seeing her every May, pre-COVID. I am trying to figure out how much food she has helped collect. And that would be a trivia question because I, she gets out there and talks to people throughout the community and makes sure that it is well-publicized, the, the local stamp-out hunger food drive through the, through the local poster, post offices. So amazing, amazing. And we'll miss you on the Women's Commission and, but we are looking forward to seeing what else you've got planned for us. So thank you for everything. I also want to note that we are, we still have another, a little less than a month left in the Township Assistance Program for county residents. If you're struggling to pay for basic necessities like rent and utilities, we ask you please contact your township trustee. We have worked as the board of commissioners with the county council to provide funding for our township trustees, for residents who are struggling financially as a result of COVID-19. And no matter where you live in the county, whether you're in the city town or outside of either, you have, you live in a township and so your township trustee is the, the place you need to turn to. And sooner rather than later. So if you need information on how to contact your trustee, you can find it in every one of our minutes for our meetings. Just open the packet for today. You can see in the minutes. Thank you, Ms. Freeman, for that. Or you can go to co.munro.in.us and go to the emergency management page because you will find that link, you will find that link there with all of the contact information for each and every township trustee. So with that, Commissioner Giffens, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think you've covered it all. Thank you.
Excellent. It is 10 minutes to 11:00. So we will come back at 11:00 AM for our work session, if that's okay with you.
That's great.
Great. We will, this meeting is adjourned and we will return at 11:00 AM for the work session. Thanks, everyone. and we will return at 11:00 AM for the work session. Thanks, everyone.